Call the meeting to order, if you would, join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we know that our role as supervisors is sometimes hard to understand. Help us to define it with justice and compassion. Bless all those men and women who are at risk while serving and protecting the people of our country, our commonwealth and our nation. And also be, give strength to our colleague Donna Chuning as she deals with her illness. Our blessings are with her and we ask that you give her strength. Amen.
Okay, there aren't no additions to the agenda. So with that, I would look for a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, consent agenda, could I get an approval on that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Public appearances next, presentation of resolution.
Business and industry starts, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Whereas business and industry is an integral part of the local economy and vibrant community in Orange County, offering a broad range of employment opportunities and providing a stable revenue base that helps support public services for the citizens of Orange County. And whereas Board of Supervisors recognizes the jobs and investments created by business and industry throughout the county in agriculture, commercial, and manufacturing services. And whereas throughout the years, business and industry have greatly contributed to Orange County's growth and prosperity, which led to Orange County's recognition as one of Virginia's most outstanding communities to work and live. And whereas Board of Supervisors values business and industry in Orange County as a partner, neighbor, and recognizes the contributing impact that business and industry lends to the Orange County economy and community as a whole. And whereas Orange County Chamber of Commerce has been accustomed and leading or in support of an event to celebrate business and industry, now therefore be it resolved on this twenty-second day of April two thousand fourteen, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors recognizes that two thousand fourteen marks the twenty-first year of celebrating the Business and Industry Appreciation Event in Orange County, recognizes the positive impacts that business and industry have made in the local economy and growth over the last twenty years, and thanks the Orange County Chamber of Commerce for their organization of festivities. And be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors recognizes that the twenty-first Annual Business and Industry Appreciation Event will take place on the evening of May fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. Yay!
Thank you.
You're welcome. That'd be perfect.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Teal.
All right. Richie. You'll never live that down. And the next, I assume then is the National Travel and Tourism Week.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, a proclamation declares the week of May three through eleven, two thousand fourteen, is National Travel and Tourism Week. By virtue of the authority vested in the Orange County Board of Supervisors, we hereby proclaim the week of May three through eleven, two thousand fourteen, is National Travel and Tourism Week in Orange County, Virginia. Whereas travel to and within the United States provides significant economic benefits for the nation, generating two trillion in economic output in two thousand twelve, with eight hundred fifty-five billion spent directly by travelers that spurred an additional one trillion in other industries. And whereas travel is among the largest private sector employer in the United States, supporting fourteen point six million jobs in two thousand twelve, including seven point seven million directly in the travel industry and six point nine million in other industries. And whereas travelers spending directly generated tax revenues of one hundred and twenty-eight point eight billion for federal, state, and local governments, funds used to support essential services and programs. And whereas international travel to the United States is the nation's largest single export industry, greater than the export of business services, machinery, computers, and electronic products, motor vehicles, and agriculture. And in two thousand twelve, travel alone generated one hundred sixty-eight point one billion in exports, creating forty-five billion in balance of travel trade surplus for the U.S. Can you fix the rest of it? Whereas tourism was again an important contributor to the local economy of Orange County in two thousand twelve, bringing in a total of forty-three point two-four million in revenue for two thousand twelve, which was a three point seven percent increase over the previous year, and provided three point one million in state and local tax revenue. And whereas visitation in Orange County continues to increase with visitors attending annual events such as Historic Garden Week, Montpelier Wine Festival, Gordonsville Fried and Chicken Festival, Trashy Ribs and Blues, Big Damn Bike Show, Orange County Fair, Edible Food Fest, Orange Street Festival, Somerset Steam and Gas Show, Liberty Ride, Taste of Freedom Wine Festival, Constitution Day Celebration in Montpelier, Gordonsville Street Festival, Montpelier Fiber Festival, and the Montpelier Hunt races. And whereas Orange County continues to commemorate the sesquicentennial of the Civil War by planning and executing events to commemorate the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Battle of Orange Courthouse, the Mine Run Campaign, and the Battle of Wilderness, which are contributors towards travel and tourism. And whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than seventy-five percent of all trips taken in the United States, spurs countless benefits to travelers' creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, relationships, and wellness. And whereas travel is a catalyst that moves the national economy forward, now therefore be it proclaimed on this twenty-second day of April, two thousand fourteen, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes May third to the eleventh, two thousand fourteen, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Orange County, and urges all citizens of Orange County to join in this special occurrence.
Thank you. I was going to say, we'll take a drop there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. And yes, the Tourism Quarterly Report.
I was letting you sit before I stood up. Um, that's a wonderful segue into giving y'all a quick update on the state of tourism in Orange County for the first quarter of two thousand fourteen. Um, as we presented to you before, we have changed the look and feel of our, um, marketing pieces so they all have a consistent look and feel as a branding initiative. Um, we've done that with our lo- our latest calendar of events as well as our wine brochure that we recently put out. We're excited to say that we're also beginning a venture with Orange County High School. For some of the brochures that we print in-house are, um, more of the local history brochures that we print in-house, we've asked and they've reached out to us, um, the high school, to revamp those to have the consistent look and feel of our other marketing pieces, but also to give some of the high school students in the marketing program some real-world experience on working with business projects. And so we're really looking forward to that endeavor endeavor. I met with Kim Little at the schools, um, just the other day and she took the pieces that we have now back with her as well as our new marketing pieces so that she could compare the two and start the students working on that. So we'll be giving you an update on that as, as that progresses. A couple of different things that we've, um, started over the past year or so are passport programs. It started with the National Park Service and us being part of the passport program with them. Then the Journey Through Hallow Ground came up with a passport program and of course we continued with that with them. Um, now we're part of the two thousand fourteen Motorcycle Grand Tour of Virginia. This is something that W.A.L. participated in last year and we felt as though to partner with W.A.L. and to attract more people to Orange County, this was a worthwhile endeavor for us. So we are on the passport also. Um, in speaking with the Motorcycle Grand Tour planners, they estimate that another six hundred to nine hundred riders will come through our area to participate in this. And the nicest part of this is the closing party for this tour this year will be in Orange on November eighth. So all of those people who collect their passports and get their stamps, they'll come back to the closing party to, to see who wins the grand prize and that type thing. And so they will be here in Orange again. So it gives them a wonderful reason to return. As far as the visitor center goes, our visitor center visitation is still trending downwards from what it has been in the previous years, which I've reported before, is a common trend across the tourism. One way that we're trying to help track our visitors and use the data that we get from our visitors to better, um, target our marketing, is we've changed our way from just doing a clicker and having them sign into a guestbook. We are actually just capturing their zip codes now. We're still using our clicker, but we're also capturing their zip codes so we can get, um, demographic information and stuff from them and use that better toward our marketing plan. We're still active with Journey Through Hallow Ground, as I mentioned. We just recently hosted a CTA event with them. Jason Woods and myself went and did a presentation to the form, to the, um, future CTAs as well as the present CTAs about Orange County and Orange County tourism, which was very well received and that was hosted at the Holiday House. Um, website visitation is continuing to trend upward. Um, we have done a little revamp to our website right now. We've changed the look and feel of it a little bit with more graphics and less text. Um, and we hope to see the return on that because we've, we've heard information that people just don't want to read down through everything. They want to have something that's going to grab them when they first get to our website page. So what we've done is we've added the picture of the Orange County in seventeen thirty-four, the map right there on our first page to kind of entice people to read down further and, and scroll down. Facebook has been huge for us. We started about a year ago. Um, we were holding steady at about two hundred and eighty-some, uh, Facebook likes until, um, our marketing firm, DIA, started a five dollar a day campaign for us, where for five dollars we would have our, um, logo come up on the side of a Facebook page and that boosted us four hundred and ninety percent to seventeen hundred likes in about three months. So that definitely, that five dollars a day definitely paid off. So we're actually looking, we've tailed that back a little bit right now. We're going to focus our marketing dollars toward events since we're in the middle of event season and attracting more people to the events. And then when we get out of event season, we'll go back to that five dollars a day. Um, as you can see from the report, we've had a lot of notoriety from a number of different, um, media outlets. That continues. Just the other day, I saw a website that load, that listed, um, Gordonsville is the number four small city in Virginia to come visit. So we're, we're continuing to see these things pop up on, it's hard for me to keep up with all of them. I scan the internet to see when I can find news stories and stuff and it's just hard to keep up with it. But it's wonderful to see that all the different entities in Orange towns as well as businesses are getting all the notoriety. As far as the sesquicentennial goes, we are in the midst right now in the final stages of planning our Mayhurst commemoration, which will be the commemoration of the christening of A.P. Hill's daughter, which will be on May second at Mayhurst. That'll be right before the Wilderness commemorations begin on the third. And I know the Civil War State Group at Lake of the Woods has a lot going on as well as Friends of the Wilderness Battlefield and the National Park Service for the Wilderness commemorations. Our sesquicentennial here in Orange County will end this December with an event with the Exchange Hotel. Um, we're planning it right now with the town of Gordonsville and the Exchange Hotel. So we're looking to do something that's more, as this Mayhurst commemoration is, more of a social, looking at the social and family life during the Civil War instead of your basic reenactment. Lastly, we're working right now on the, um, Second Annual Orange County Business Expo. Um, the Office of Economic Development and Tourism are working on that. And our tagline this year is customer service hospitality is everyone's business. So we're trying to reach out, we mailed out, I think, over four hundred and some postcards yesterday to area businesses, um, trying to attract them and get their frontline staff and the people that work for them to come in. And here we have two speakers. We have Mark Wilson, who is a phenomenal speaker on the customer service realm and ODA has had him a few times. So we're bringing him back to Orange County as well as Dr. Robert Kenny from Germana Community College. We're partnering with them this year to do, um, a seminar on customer service as well. And we will have the trade show afterwards like we did last year for all of them to showcase themselves to the businesses themselves, but as well as we're inviting the public in, so. And that's what I have for right now.
You've been busy.
Yes, sir. And it continues.
Good. Any questions? Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the members of the board, it appears in our setup for today's meeting, we left out a power cord to the computer.
Larry!
So I apologize, there won't be any agenda on the screen.
Okay. Uh, next we move on then to public comment. Is anyone signed up, Allison?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, in that case, we'll move on to board comment.
Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, one item, I guess I could do that while Lee was up here. About, uh, a week and a half ago, I had the opportunity to, uh, be part of a bus tour of Orange County, looking at the, uh, Civil War encampments during the winter of eighteen sixty-three, eighteen sixty-four. And, uh, while I read a good bit about the, uh, Civil War history in Orange County, I, I was amazed at how much I did not know about the encampment that, that went on during that, that winter. Lee, of course, and his, basically his whole army, uh, were here. But the sites that, that exist still are, are really amazing. Uh, there was a fellow named Clark Hall along with Frank Walker that were, Clark was really the guy giving the tour, but Frank was there to sort of do the, uh, the emphasis and add a little bit of spice to it. And it was an amazing day that, uh, I only wish there was some way to capture that and, and make it more consumable, uh, to look at the encampments at, uh, at Montpelier on the other side of Route twenty. I didn't even know existed until we got there and they're doing the archaeological work now on that. An amazing situation there. Uh, I'm sure Lee's aware of it, he's probably been out there many times. But it's so little publicized that it was new to me. We had the opportunity to go up to the top of Clark Mountain and, and see where the, uh, signal towers were, signal, uh, c- encampments were and, and the like. And, uh, uh, look at the, uh, at the Fords, at Raccoon Ford and Morton's Ford and Somerset Ford and, and all of these kind of things and, and tell the story. And it, it, it's a rather amazing, uh, to, to try to realize what the setting that was here and, and the number of people here. As a matter of fact, at one time, according to these experts, the, the dividing line between the North and South as far as the, the armies went, was the Rapidan. For, for the entire winter of eighteen sixty-three, eighteen sixty-four, the Rapidan was what kept the North and South, uh, armies apart. Now, they visited and did all sorts of crazy things, but, but it, you know, there's a, there's an interesting twist as you dig down into the history of that. But anyway, it was an amazing day, uh, if, if it comes up again, I, if, there was an article in the, in the paper about it. And it, it, from a tourism perspective, there were people there from Chicago, DC, several places in Maryland, one person from Pennsylvania. So it was, uh, not just local folks. Most of the people were local, but, uh, they, they were quite a few others. So, uh, if, if, I expect to stay in touch with this guy, Clark Hall. If we get more information that can be used, I'll certainly make you aware of it. But there's a, a whole nother story beyond Wilderness and Mine Run and, and the ones that get the most of attention. That's a, that's an intriguing story. I actually went to one lady's house, uh, where it was her great-grandfather, I guess, owned the house at the time. She, there's an entire history about that house. Uh, and there's a book that talks about two brothers, one fought for the North and one fought for the South. Well, they came out of that house. And so, uh, it's a really, really neat little tidbits there to, uh, somehow find a way to tell the story.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, in that case, we'll move on to the action items. First one, the Award of Contract for Ambulance Design. Stephanie.
You might want to save her and us the pain. It's not like we're going to tell you no, so. I was just, didn't want you to talk for like thirty minutes and then all of us go, I make that motion and second it, okay, and then you sit down. So I kind of wanted to save you.
Thank you.
I was trying to do it on the DL too, but it didn't really work that well, so, um.
Well, please.
That's kind of weird, well.
Okay. It's all right. Um, I, I did just want to take a moment of your time to point out and say thank you to John and two of his staff members, Lieutenant Kenny Franklin and Captain Eddie Seal, who spent hours upon hours going over specs from several different companies. And our spec sheet for this project was over eighty-three pages. And those gentlemen worked tirelessly with me to make sure that we found the best vendor for this, this project. So I did just want to take a moment to say thank you to them. We, we did receive a total of six responses from all over the country and have selected Fesco. And we're joined tonight with Mick Seabright, who's the Regional Account Rep for Fesco Services. Um, we really appreciated Fesco's solution for these custom-built ambulances that have, um, significant safety features as well as the ability to remount two to three times. So we, we're looking for really good ROI and accountability here. They also have a great, um, repair team. They will come, they have a service facility in Ashland. They will come pick things up, drop our team members off, and just seems like a really well-rounded organization. Are there any particular questions about the ambulance or?
Do they have any history of experience in fire and rescue?
None at all.
Uh, just your sales rep, Mike, uh, I've, I've known since the early seventies. So he's, doesn't just sell them. He rode in them backs when they were a little bumpier and everything, so.
I, I actually do, I had sort of a general type question. The, because we, uh, are buying the capability to remount this on several different frames, the, uh, the equipment inside, are there, are you using primarily standard items that, that should be available going forward? I mean, you know, there's, there's lots of components that could wear out or fail at some point, especially if we mount this on the, the second and third chassis. And so I was just looking for a comment about how you, how you think about that availability and, and maintenance question of, of, uh, everything from air conditioning systems to all the electronics and so forth.
Absolutely. Uh, one of the things that we do is, uh, our continuity of build process is very common across our entire product line. We do offer, uh, different scales of models. Uh, all of our vehicles are built the same. We just enlarge, uh, small to large. All of our componentry is exactly the same across our entire product line. Therefore, that gives us a lot of continuity when we build, especially when we go to do remounts, uh, because we build all aluminum construction. It's easy, easier to do than had we done a wooden interior ambulance, which will over time fail and crack and give you problems. So as far as componentry, we use a lot of common components. Uh, we use top-end manufacturers as far as our air conditioning system, which is ProAir. Uh, we use Banner, uh, different companies like that have been in the business for a long, long time. So, uh, those things are readily available to all of us.
And, and the warranties that come along with this aren't just for electrical or the engine. We actually have a component warranty for two hundred and fifty thousand miles.
All right.
Does this price, uh, hold for the entire, uh, option? Or is it, is there an inflation factor in for the?
Three and a half percent.
Three and a half percent.
It's locked in in the contract.
Okay. The other thing is for, uh, John, uh, any significant differences from our existing ambulances?
Basically, uh, Mr. Fram, it's going to be the, the same size. The difference is, is the quality of the ambulance, again, the, the build of the box, the safety considerations of the box. This actually has airbags in the back of the box if there was some sort of a, of a mishap. Um, it's just, it's a much better quality than the current ambulances that we are using. And in the long run, it's going to save us some money by being able to do that remounting.
Okay. One thing, I guess, Mike, what, what were you saying about, uh, a private company in Maryland?
Uh, we have, uh, Life Star Salisbury, uh, that runs our bodies. And they have them on, uh, probably the fourth chassis in excess of one million miles on the bodies.
And that is mostly non-emergencies that they're running, but they've been through the.
But it just shows you the longevity. And I've actually had people comment that have looked at those ambulances with three hundred and sixty thousand miles and the doors open and close, just like the day the truck was built.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, fee donation and donation requests from Orange Baptist Church.
Yes, sir. You have before you a request for a fee donation for a residential rehabilitated project on Lindsey Lane that's being undertaken by the Orange Baptist Church as a mission project. The total fee would be two hundred and forty, two hundred and four dollars. Um, and there's approximately thirty-five hundred dollars in the bills, so. So moved to an item.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next we go to the adoption of auxiliary list for secondary roads.
The board?
Yep.
Yeah, they've got notes that say after seven.
Okay.
Thank you. I was getting ready to launch into that delay and I said, I'd give you a briefing.
No, that's okay.
Both of them reset for after seven then, okay. So that would take us into appointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
There's, there's some for me. I didn't want to go ahead and, uh, point these.
I would make the motion to, uh, appoint the county administrator, Brian David, to these, uh, three, uh, specific, uh, things outlined in the memo.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yep, we don't have anything on the others, okay. Um, discussion items, update on Locust Grove Child Care Site. Alicia?
She comes forward. She and I have been communicating about this, uh, before we got to you.
Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, just wanted to provide you with an update of the Locust Grove Child Care Program. Um, you should have before you a memo that states, um, all of our activities and what we've been doing, um, recruitment-wise. Um, unfortunately, the program is behind again this year. Um, we feel like it's just that it's its first year and the other two sites are having to subsidize the program at this time. Um, I don't anticipate them breaking even by the end of the year at this point. However, we did send flyers home April fifteenth to, um, advertise for our summer program. And already at this time, we have approximately twelve kids that will be attending full-time at Locust Grove. Um, we need fourteen to break even and the May fifteenth deadline is not here yet. Um, so I'm here tonight to just ask the board's opinion or what you would wish to do with this program.
Well, we're covering costs between all of them, correct?
All three sites are, as a whole, all three are, are breaking even.
Oh, it is, it is just the first year, so.
So you say you've got another month before, or almost another month before, uh, you close out the reservations on the Locust Grove?
We do. Um, May fifteenth is the deadline. What we did, when we sent the flyers home, we said to ensure your spot, because each site is licensed for fifty children. To ensure your spot, your registration packet and your registration fee had to both be in by May fifteenth to ensure your child's spot, whether they're full-time or part-time, because we can do a combination of both to cover the sites, so.
And you said you needed thirteen to break even.
Um, according to what we budgeted, we need, um, fourteen. I would be comfortable with fifteen because you always have kids that take a week vacation, so that would help cover that off week. Um, we have twelve at this time. And that's not including the part-time kids that we've gotten interest in as well.
Now, that's twelve that have submitted their forms and paid.
Not the registration fees yet, but they know that they have to be in by May fifteenth. Um, Joe has been talking to parents nonstop through emails, um, phone calls. I fielded some phone calls, um, yesterday, I, no, Friday, I talked to a mom for two kids full-time and two kids part-time three days a week. So the calls are coming in and I think they're getting a little nervous that this deadline is coming and they want to be prepared. Um, and that was kind of our, our move too, so that we could plan for the summer as well.
One of the things that Alicia and I discussed was, uh, you know, this is a, I guess, a turnaround situation for this, for this childcare facility, for this, uh, program. And that, uh, if they can make the numbers that they need for the summer, that certainly gives an opportunity to continue the program, uh, to build awareness and participation, and then revisit whether you want to go for the, for the fall, uh... And then revisit whether you wanna go for the, for the fall, uh, uh, term when school goes back into session. So it's more of a kind of, uh, linear process where this doesn't commit the board or.
Correct.
Carry this forward from the school.
Well, I think, I think one of the, this is a, this is a catch twenty-two kind of problem, but all of us at some point have needed to find daycare for a child. And most people, when they're finding daycare, when they get someone, they keep them. And I think one of the biggest problems maybe with this particular site is the inconsistency with it. Because if you're gonna think you've got somebody for the summer, um, you know, you're gonna wanna carry on. So it, it's, at some point, we need to either say it's gonna be open or it's gonna be closed. Because I, I think that might even be a little bit of apprehension for people. Because once they've gotten their child into a place and the kids accustomed to it, they're not gonna move them. I mean, they, just, let's face it, I mean, they just don't. You know, Jacob came to y'all and stayed until you told him he couldn't come back anymore.
I did not do that, I promise.
When he was seventeen, you know, he said, you gotta go home now. I'm just kidding. Um, but, you know, it, 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 I, I think that's kind of the problem. But my next question would be, when the other sites are making a profit, what do you do with that profit? Because it kind of turns back in to those kids there at that site. And it's, I, I'm gonna use the word, it's a little bit unfair because, because of that, but I mean, I know you need to carry.
The only thing that we have really been doing, except, with the exception of last year, we asked to carry the money forward for the purchase of the new van. Um, in the past, before that, all we have carried forward or asked to be carried forward is any excess fundraising efforts. Everything else that's in excess goes back, I guess, into the general fund. So the sites don't get to keep that and roll it forward anyway.
Right, but you've been able to purchase stuff for the sites and, um.
That's usually done throughout the year with the budget that they have in hand. It's not, we don't usually say, okay, we have this much excess at the end of the year. We want to do this, with the exception of the van last year.
Well, good, well, I mean, I'm, I'm, well, I guess that's a good thing, but you have, it's not like you've had a lot of money left over either, so, I mean, sometimes.
Sometimes we have. Um, and one of the main things, uh, what that I was looking at too was going back to, um, the March two thousand and eleven, when this was the last year the site was in operation. At that time, they were twenty-four thousand dollars behind. So I really feel that we have a good director in place. He's very enthusiastic, has a lot of good ideas, um, and just wants to make this work. He's very vested. Um, he wants to stay in Orange. And, um, it's just, I think he's doing a great job. He's been a great addition to our program. And I think he's gonna be able to build it the way we need him to.
Well, then, I mean, my, then my question still goes back to you. Do you feel that the parents down there feel that there is a level of consistency? And if that is, or possibly a problem, then we need to make a decision that it's gonna be open and we're gonna say, you know, we're gonna commit to it being open unless it's one kid, I mean.
And that's, and that was the challenge, at least for staff coming up with, is that the, the, the guidance or the, the policy is that this shall not be subsidized, that, that as a whole, the whole programs will stand on their own. And so this way, by shifting the surpluses from the other sites offsets the, the deficit at Locust Grove. But if we have to get into subsidy, then that's, that's another conversation.
And I can tell you, in talking, I've met with all three childcare directors. They know what's going on. And both of the other childcare directors are perfectly fine with helping cover. And they've actually said, if we don't, can't do carryforwards this year, they'll start from scratch next year, just to make sure this program keeps going. So it's definitely a team effort and they're wanting to see it through as well.
Well, then I think we need to send a message that, you know, it's more than just the summer. I mean, I think we need to go ahead and commit.
At least another year.
At least enough, you know.
And I, I, I truly think for him to build it, that would be all it would take, to be where we need to be, just to break even.
That way they would, that way, that way they would know that if they're in the summer, they've sort of got an age for the next year, school year.
Exactly. Well, and a perfect example, we had, um, actually Joe had a phone call today from a mother who just moved. I don't know where Battlefield Middle School is. Is that Spotsylvania or? Anyway, this, um, this mom has two middle schoolers and we go up through middle school age. And she called, they just moved down here and she said, I need to put my middle schoolers somewhere. I don't feel comfortable with them staying home. They'll definitely be there during the summer full-time and then next school year, they'll be there after school. So just doing that with some people moving, you know, we're starting to pick kids up. And so it's been, it's been really good. We're.
She didn't know where they'd been after school next year, then she'd be looking somewhere else.
Exactly.
How, how about if we, 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 we did this, is that, at, at this point, the board's commitment is to continue it through the summer and on into next, the twenty-fourteen, fifteen school year. And that if we need to come back for any type of supplemental appropriations, then we'll come back with that, understanding that the board's direction is to, to work on it for this next year.
Uh, I'm, I mean, I'm.
So I'm in, I'm in favor of that.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Do you need a motion?
I'm looking at Glendon. Is that sufficient, uh, yeah, why don't we go ahead and, and get a, just a motion to authorize that.
I would so move.
Second.
To operate the facility for the summer and for this twenty-fourteen, fifteen school year, uh, with the understanding staff will, uh, come back if necessary for supplemental appropriations.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Alicia.
I do have a question while you're up here.
Yes, sir.
I saw the, uh, the press release on those courses that you're running.
Yes, sir.
How well are those attended usually?
Um, we are having some issues getting referrals. Um, it's something that Brian and I talked about. Um, we get good referrals from the courts. We get them from self-referrals. One of the places that we're lacking in referrals is from the school system, who should be our biggest supporter. Um, and so that's something that we're working on. We are tr, we are working with, um, Chris Alis right now to, for the fourteen-week program. She is receiving the referrals directly and we've been playing phone tag to just to make sure we've got the referrals in place and we're good to go. Um, it just depends on the class and depends on the support that we have.
Thank you.
Um, as you go, uh, there, there are a number of things that, uh, once, uh, now that hearing all that, that, uh, Dr. Brimsey and I are gonna kind of start collaborating on and, and there's some other issues that have come up. I, I don't wanna characterize on more than, uh, issues, but there, I think there's some things that we can work together on to, to maybe make it more efficient, a more, uh, yes, efficient, uh, uh, relationship between county and, and schools, particularly some of these where, where our, our universe is, uh, is only.
Okay.
Can I say one quick thing? Um, just, I don't know if you guys know, Monday, if you have time, we have the distracted driving event at the high school. If you guys wanna come by and check out the simulator, um, feel free. It's from eight to three and then from five to seven at the OCal, so.
I'm sure I wanna know. I have memories that I don't wanna have.
I don't know, were you texting and driving when you were in high school?
I was, nope, very busy.
Just say no.
I didn't even have a cellphone other than high school.
I, I remember the first time I was doing behind the wheel and there was another guy in the front. And as we were rolling down the hill at Woodbury, he rolled down the window and went, hey, to his buddy. Paul Sizmore stomped on the brake, he hit the windshield. He was like, what the hell? He was like, get out of my car. And he did not take driver's ed that year. So Paul had to take care of those things. Alright, next thing we have is the update on employee wellness pilot program.
Brian? Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, at your February eleventh meeting, Supervisor Abs and I presented a conceptual pilot program, uh, to kind of, to begin focusing on employee health and wellness. This is because the, the county has a self-insurance program and we certainly can, uh, try to, uh, I guess, promote employee health and wellness. And, and one of the ideas that came forward was a public-private partnership with Anytime Fitness. Uh, John Crowder with, with, uh, Anytime Fitness is here this evening.
And Natalie, just in case we have questions for Natalie.
And Natalie, thank you. She's one of the shirts. She has a lot of answers. And what, uh, you all agreed was to allow us to kind of work through, okay, well, how do we, how do we get our arms around this and, and work out something that, that is, uh, certainly, uh, fair and equitable to Anytime Fitness, but also be workable within our, our county operations. And what you have before you are the elements of those program. Um, we've worked through, uh, who would be eligible, uh, the cost, uh, at thirty-seven dollars per month and then, uh, fifty-nine dollar, uh, discounted security fee. What we've come up with is, is to incent frequency. And that by three months, and we kind of started out with six months and then Supervisor Abs felt, uh, three months was, was a little bit more turnaround than waiting six months. And that what we've done is tried to say, three months, you commit to certain frequency over three months, twenty-five visits minimum over three months. Then the next three months, the county does it. We can do this through a voucher system and, and, uh, we can work out the, the, how, how, how the dollars are exchanged. But this would be essentially the, 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 the agreement would be between the employee and Anytime Fitness. It would not necessarily be between the county and Anytime Fitness, other than through the exchange of the dollars and how we would participate in the program. Um, this would, uh, certainly be available for the Orange facility as well as on crossroads. Uh, as we understand it, there are Anytime Fitness facilities in Charleston and Fredericksburg that could be used on a case-by-case basis. And that from what John says, there's reciprocity agreements with, with those. Um, and then, uh, if somebody would make it for that full year, we're talking about two hundred and eighty-one dollars, uh, total cost per employee. I don't have an idea what the universe of this would be. We could certainly try to, try to estimate that. And then if there are any other fit, similar, uh, fitness centers out there that want to start partnering us, I think this is ready-made to be portable with, with those as well, if, if they're interested.
Brian, how are you marking the twenty-five times? Just the key fob being read?
Right, they're, they could, yeah.
Yeah, the way our system works is you have a key fob, that's the anytime of, of the whole system. And so it, it obviously records any time someone comes through the door and then we can print out at any point in time, how many times someone's come here.
If for some reason we were to have someone that obviously was not working out like they said they were, uh, how long do you all keep your video from people entering?
Um, the, the archive is probably about a year, year and a half.
Okay.
Oh, coming in and out the door?
Uh, yes, because if so, if somebody's sitting there and, you know, they're going occasionally, well, yeah, they can go by, throw their key fob up against the door. It records that they've gone and worked out.
Sure.
But if, if they're putting on forty pounds and working out supposedly, you know, but there just needs to be a, a, a safety measure in there.
Well, John, John and I talked about that yesterday. And, and that's why, when you, when you sign up for Anytime Fitness, what's gonna happen is the individual is going to go in there and they are going to sign up for Anytime Fitness. Um, we are not signing them up. They will be signing themselves up.
Paying the first three months.
They're gonna pay the first three months. Matter of fact, they're gonna pay the third three months. And then the, you know, so there is a level of commitment to them. And, and yeah, someone could come in and, you know, do we, I don't know that we necessarily want to get it, well, you only worked out for ten minutes, but this guy worked out for an hour and ten minutes, or you only worked, and, and I know if somebody wants to game something.
It's nothing more than a safeguard in the system.
Well, it, well, and, and if, and if it.
They have the safeguard because they archive their videos for.
Right, but I wanna make it very, very clear. I have no intention, no intention of any county employee going back in and asking John Crowder to pull up a video to make sure somebody's not gaming the system. Because if, if that's the feel that what we're gonna do here, then I don't wanna do it.
I can't, I can't imagine somebody going to the trouble of going there.
Right, well, that's.
Slapping his key and then leaving, I mean.
We have, um, several businesses that, that, that we do this with where they give so much to their employees for usage. And, and I, I told Shannon that, um, it, it is funny because people will do, they will come just for, hey, I'm two visits short of getting, reaching my goal, which is the incentive. Because it's, you know, we talked with this, hey, uh, if I know I'm gonna get half of my money back and I need two more visits, I'm probably gonna get in there. And if I make the trip all the way down, excuse me, to the gym, probably gonna go inside. And if I go inside, I probably will get on the treadmill. Do they stay an hour? Probably, maybe, but they've gotten into the gym. Uh, we haven't ever found that, that people are kind of gaming the system by just hitting it and walking back to the car. Cause they may come down specifically to hit the incentive, but they typically will go in and, and actually work out some. But to answer your question.
No question, typically they will.
Yeah, absolutely.
But when all rules have a person's name assigned to it.
Right.
And if we can prevent that from happening, we're better off.
And to answer your question, you came back and you said, so-and-so, we've got a question about, we could go back and say, here's the, here's where they hit the door and went back to the car or, no, they went in and.
Okay.
Well, but John and I use a perfect example, not meaning to throw my business out there, but I'm a perfect example. I come in, I hit the fob, I put my water in the cubby and then I go run for forty-five minutes. And then I come back, I get my stuff out of my cubby and I leave. But the funny thing about it is, you're not gonna see me on a video working out. So I, I, I just wanna make it very, very clear, if we do adopt this, I mean, I know you're concerned and we talked about it, but I have absolutely no intention, and I don't even, if, if there is a hint of that, then we just won't do it. Because I don't want people to feel like we're gonna go back and watch them on a video working out. I just.
I'm asking purely as a safeguard because we are talking about taxpayers' money.
Well, we're talking about taxpayers' money regardless because we're self-insured. So if, if that's the way you feel, I will tell you, um, that's perfectly fine to feel that way. I'm making it very clear, I do not want that part of this. So if everybody, if three other people feel that it needs to be part of it, then don't even make the motion to do this. Because I have no intention of being big brother as far as that's concerned. I hope people, um, enjoy working out and enjoy the benefits from working out. And, um, that's the purpose of this. It's, it's a health and wellness thing, not a, we're gonna get you because you didn't do what you were supposed to do.
But, uh, all I was doing was checking on a safeguard.
Okay.
Nothing more than that.
Let me, uh, make, make this suggestion. I think we're, we're also into a pilot program and when I say pilot program.
Yeah.
We have, could do mid-course corrections if we, if we see some, some issues. I certainly, Mr. Crozier, I, I, I appreciate and I understand, Mike, one of these things, we're caught in between where we wanna incentivize good, healthy behavior, but we also, you know, there are some that will push the limits of that. And, and trying to, to, to strike that happy medium. We, uh, we can actually put, put folks that are gonna participate on, on at least some, some informed notice that the intent here, this is the honor system, we, we hope you, you do that. And, and if we have to make a mid-course correction because of that, then I think we can be prepared to do that.
Right, and that's, that's all I was doing was checking to make sure that there is a safety in the system.
Well, and those are the same people who take twenty smoke breaks a day or don't come back at, from their half-hour lunch, they come back thirty-five minutes late. I mean.
We know, we know those people anyway.
Right.
They, 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 they use the, they use the office phone to, to call home and they're checking their Facebook account while they're at work.
I, uh, I would make the motion. We initiate the pilot program.
Let me, let me ask you questions about it before, uh, the, the math, I wanna make sure the math is working here. Again, I really have two questions. Is it our intent that this three and three, three, employee pays, pays for three months, county reimburses for three? Is that cycle gonna continue? Is that, is that our plan? Cause the, 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 I, the math doesn't work for me. If, if, I mean, I don't know where the two eighty-one came from.
It's the fifty-nine.
We, we, we pay the, 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 uh, the setup fee, um, and I did not include that in there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it does, I can't get to two eighty-one no matter what I do, unless I do seven point five nine seven months.
My apologies, the boy. This was done a little bit late at night.
But I, I'm just trying to, I don't, I don't, I know you'll fix the number, but I just want, what, what is the plan?
The plan, the plan is, is that upon enrollment, we're going to have, we're going to give a voucher for the fifty-nine dollars for the one-time setup fee. And then the three months on, three, you know, three months employee, three months county. But the county absorbs, or pays for the fifty-nine dollar one-time setup fee. That's how we get to the two eighty-one. It's, it's two.
Yeah, it's one eleven for three months, then another one eleven, and then fifty-nine is two eighty-one.
Yeah, that's how I got to the math, is the fifty-nine dollars is, is taken care of by the county.
That's two eighty-one. Thirty-seven, thirty-seven, thirty-seven is one eleven.
Twice.
Twice, plus the fifty-nine.
I left the fifty-nine out.
No, you didn't.
Well, no, I didn't explain that they were doing it. That's the piece that I left out.
But, back to my question. Beyond the pilot, is the plan to do three on, three off?
As long as they are meeting their twenty-five times in the three months, they would get the voucher. So it would, and if at any time that stops, they, cause what they're doing is, when you go into any time, you sign up for a year at a time. So you, you set up, like right now, John's got a, my credit card number. And, you know, once a month, he bills, that, that thirty-seven dollars is debited from my account. And then if, if I, let's say I was part of that, at that next three-month stage, I would still be paying the thirty-seven dollars. They, we, the county would then reimburse the employee separately from John.
I think Mr. White's question is, once we go past the pilot program, is the county going to pay for all twelve months or continue to pay for six months?
No, no, what we, yeah, we're, we're gonna keep the three months on, that, that, that frequency.
That's, that's what he was asking.
And, and.
It's just called a pilot program right now. It's just called a pilot program right now, because we don't know if it's gonna succeed.
Yeah, I would, I would make the motion that we would initiate this pilot program and revi- revisit it after one year.
That's fine.
Fair enough. Uh, I, I'd like to give you maybe a six-month status report, sooner than that, but, but you, Mr. White, your question's absolutely, is that there was some thought, okay, what happens after a year? Do we go to a six months on, six months off? At this point, I, I think just leaving it three months, three months is probably the.
Everybody will get used to that.
And I just, two, two things, or one thing, one thing I wanna make very clear. I know Jim brought it up the last time, and, um, I've had a couple people say something to me. If, if other gyms around here, after we see that, you know, after a while, that, I mean, I don't want, I think right now, if you had five gyms come to staff right now and say, oh, we wanna do this, I don't even know we know how it's gonna work. But I think maybe after, you said you're gonna come back at six months and give us a status update. I think then if, if other gyms can do the report out that we need, and, and can do what we need, then, um, I don't see why we couldn't extend this to other gyms as well. I just think that right now it might be a little bit, um.
Get our feet wet.
Well, we don't know, we don't know if it's gonna be cumbersome or not, you know, and that's a good point. You don't.
Right, right, and that's, yeah, no, absolutely.
I've suggested that we can make, based on demand, if there's demand with other, other facilities, then I think we can work, work hard on that.
Well, I, I think as a, as a pilot program, you can justify focusing it on one facility to see if it works, and then you can move on beyond the pilot as necessary.
And then the other comment that I had, it said to me was, well, you know, y'all are using taxpayer dollars to do this. And people, keeping in mind, we are, we are self-insured, so when.
There we go, it's healthy.
You know, in, in six months' time of working out, there's been a change in me, you know, and my cholesterol's gone down, my, you know, the things that I was doing it for, there's been a big improvement. And when you're self-insured, those things pay back tenfold.
I'm in a hundred percent support of it, believe me.
And so I just wanna make it very clear when, when people are questioning, and plus, let's just be honest, it is an incentive for our employees. And a healthy employee is a happier employee, so, um.
And more productive, and, and costs us less in, in self-insuring.
And it's really fun at six o'clock in the morning to come work out with Brian and us, so, and Dr. Gremmacy.
All right.
I prefer.
Come on, my tea.
I prefer breakfast and coffee at six, but that's okay.
Well, you can bring us breakfast and coffee.
I, I meant for me.
Okay, so, I have a motion on the floor.
I'll second the motion, thank you.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Just one other housekeeping on this matter, we will come back at your first meeting in July with kind of an agreement with, with anytime, I'll get the county attorney to help, help me draft that up. We'll have all the details as far as the formal agreement, if you ought to approve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, question on information items or committee reports? And in that case, the calendar, does that work for everyone?
Let me just, if I could, Mr. Chairman, uh, draw attention to items B and C. Uh, we have scheduled and confirmed the Sherrett report presentation at seven P M. on Tuesday, May thirteenth, here in this room. This will be part of the board's regular meeting, there are no public hearings scheduled for that evening. Uh, so this will be the sole, sole matter at seven. And then the following night, we, we have secured, uh, Lucas Grove Middle Elementary School for the second, uh, version, uh, the second presentation on, on the Sherrett report. Uh, we are certainly, uh, going to use every, every opportunity to publicize these, uh, this report presentation, uh, particularly all the stakeholders that were involved with the process, as well as the public, as well as the anybody else that may be interested in, in hearing the report.
Okay. Well, that's all good, then it would be time, yes.
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matter, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating partial public body, and consultation with legal counsel, employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty seven eleven A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion of enforcement matters in closed meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed.
To the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting roll call.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mrs. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
Okay, and bring us back in, time for the public hearing with VDOT. Present, please.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Susan Gardner of the Virginia Department of Transportation. The Code of Virginia requires that the County Board of Supervisors, in conjunction with the Department of Transportation, formulate a six-year secondary improvement plan and a priority list for the secondary improvement budget. Tonight's public hearing is being conducted for the FY twenty fifteen through twenty twenty plan and the twenty fifteen fiscal year budget. In updating the six-year plan, we have followed the priorities established last year by the Orange County Board of Supervisors. The priorities include Route six twenty-nine, La Horro Road, spot improvements, approximately a tenth of a mile on each side of the intersection of Route seven twenty-eight, with a project length of two, two tenths of a mile. Route six oh six Catharpan Road, from Route six ninety-two Saint Jess Road to Route six oh eight Doolin Road, rural rustic with minor spot widening with a project length of one point nine miles. Route six oh three Indian Town Road, from Route seven fifteen Lewiston Road to Route six fourteen Governor Almond Road, rural rustic with a project length of two point seven five miles. Route six thirty-six River Road, realignment of roadway from the river with a project length of about eight hundred feet. Route six oh eight Meadows Road, from Route six twenty-one Old Plank Road to the end of state maintenance, rural rustic with a project length of one mile. Route six sixty-nine Marquee Road, from Route six twenty-nine La Horro Road to Route six twelve Monrovia Road, rehabilitate roadway with minor widening, and Route six thirty-five Greenwood Road, bridge replacement over the railroad. This year's budget follows the first year of the secondary six-year plan, which is fiscal year twenty fifteen, which has an allocation of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. And allocations throughout the next six years of one million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Please keep in mind, this plan is only for improvements and new construction, it does not include maintenance work, such as pothole patching, ditch, pulling ditches, snow removal, or repaving roads. At this time, we solicit comments from the public concerning the six-year plan and budget.
Okay. We will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone scheduled to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Tammer, we have one speaker, Mr. Michael Mayo, one 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 zero nine Saint Jess Road.
Uh, my name's Mike Mayo, I own most of the land on Catharpan Road for about a mile and a half on one side, half a mile on the other side. And I'd like to see something done with this road, if it could be done. We've had more accidents, more, and teenagers going through my fences over the years. And take some of those turns and everything out, make it a little bit straighter. And, uh, have to, I'll donate whatever land I need on either side, cause I'm not losing. I'm getting it one way or the other, it's gonna stay, cause I got land on both sides of the road.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. No other speakers?
No, sir.
Close public hearing. Comments?
I'd like to, to follow up on, on the, on Mike's comments about Catharpan, that's something that's been in the works and under discussion for quite some time. Uh, I, I think you have a copy of petition about a year or so ago regarding the rural rustic idea. Conversation I had about a month ago when, with Mark and your, the engineer who was with you that night, I've forgotten his name, was.
Probably Craig.
The, the, I, I think the issue is defining what is and isn't going to be done under this program. Uh, as, as the, Mr. Mayo said, the, there, there's, there needs to be more than just some paving done.
Right.
There're curves and banks and all sorts of things. And so I guess the, the, the concern from the community is that it end up, you know, a safer, uh, better road, if you're gonna spend a couple million dollars or more here, you need to end up with something that is, that solves the problem.
What, what we're looking at, um, under this estimate would be, um, an eighteen-foot wide pavement with the majority of like two feet of shoulders on each side, um, improving the drainage. I know there's gonna be some areas, we're gonna need to do a little bit of tree trimming, if not tree removal, because there, there's a couple trees, um, that are extremely close to the bank area that, when we go in there and start doing construction, they're gonna probably have to come out. Um, and giving the road, um, that, not like a, your paved highway type of road, but a good secondary road is what we're aiming at doing. This is a two-mile lo- long road. If we went in there and did a full widening project, um, that would increase your estimate extreme. And, um, I, I think this would be the best, best for your buck, and in the long run, you will get a, a good road. Um, at no point in time do we ever wanna go in and improve a road and, you know, the locality not get what they want, but we also wanna make sure that locality is able to get, um, a lot of stuff done with the amount of money that they are given. So, I mean, is there an area of certain concern that they have on this road? I know they're at the very end, like up, when you come up towards, um, Saint Jess, I know it narrows down. So that would be, definitely be one section where we would spot widen.
When there's some areas where there's, there's a fairly sharp curve and, and a high bank, uh, you know.
And we'll, and, and, so that, cause that spot areas will be improving, but we would not be going from one end to the other and doing total widening. Yeah, then that's what we come up with, is, um, we do what we call a rural rustic with minor spot improvements, where we go through there, and there's areas where the road narrows down, um, there's areas where we have trees on both sides, there's areas where there is some drainage issues, so that causes traffic to move over when there is water standing on the side of the road. Um, and so that's, I mean, I, I, I drove the road last week, so, and, um, previous job, that's what I used to do is build roads, so, um.
Well, there, there's been some staking and surveying work or something going on after recently as well, I'm not sure.
Correct, correct, we've been going out there and looking at it, and making sure before we make a recommendation to the board, that, that this is what we, the, the, this is what VDOT recommends we do. Um, before we do that, we wanna make sure that, to go out there and we take a look at it, and we get an idea of what does need to be done to that road. And does the project really need to be done as a total widening, or can we do it with spot widening? And that's, that's where we, that's why we were out there looking at it, making sure when we do make this recommendation, we are not just going, oh, yeah, that's what we wanna do. No, we looked at it, and this is what, this is our best opinion that would, would make the improvements that the county would be happy with.
The residents in the area are clearly saying that the road needs more than just paving.
Correct.
And it sounds like that you're, you're headed in that path.
That's true, and, and that's true, and they, it does need more than paving. I rode the road, there's drainage that is, it goes nowhere. That's what one problem is, so you'll, we'll need to address that. There's one, there's a couple tail ditches that have been filled in, that's probably one, the right side wasn't flowing very well. You get down towards the, uh, Saint Jess end, and it slowly just sorta kinda like creeps in on you. So the next thing you know, your pavement would be going from eighteen feet down to probably fourteen feet in that one area. So, that's, that's areas we have looked at, and that would be the areas we would be doing the concentration of widening on, instead of widening from one end to the other.
Okay, I guess my, my, my question then is, within the funds that you've allocated, you think you can address those issues?
At this point in time, yes. Unless, unless something, unless we go out there and we find something major, um, at this point in time, yes, we are saying that we can do that.
In previous conversations with Mr. Mayo, and like he said this evening, I believe he'd be very willing to work if there's some trees on his property,
Mm-hmm.
or some banks, to help for the safety and everything else, he would be willing to work with you to take care of those issues.
Yes, I'd, I'd like to get his name and number, so, um, I can pass that along to the gentleman that's gonna be taking care of, care of the project, project manager, so, um, they can get in contact with each other and.
Yeah, I, I would encourage that, I mean, it's, it needs to be sort of a collaborative project to some extent, between the landowners and the residents, and you guys, so that you end up, you know, everybody gets.
And like I say, it's, there, there is, there's some areas that there is, the width is there, it needs some drainage improvements on some of that area, but when you get down a little bit lower, it, the, the road does creep in on you, the trees creep in on you. Definitely, there's some trees that have, the way they're growing, they're growing into the roadway and not away from the roadway, so they're either gonna be, need to be trimmed or, or removed. So we, you know, we've looked at certain things.
Are there right-of-way width questions, or do you have sufficient right-of-way?
Within the rural rustic, uh, we would probably have sufficient, there might be a couple areas we would need to, um, look at possibly purchasing a little bit of right-of-way. But for the rural rustic, we, we would be within the right-of-way.
One more question, and I was probably gonna go for Mark for a different section, but, uh, where the Smiley Rocks are. Catharpan and, uh, Doolin Lane.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we just had another fatal accident there the other evening. It's, you know, every year we have them. Is that something where it could be addressed to put in a stop sign on Catharpan coming from Spotsylvania at one on Doolin?
Three, make a three-way stop, stop, basically.
Yeah, do a three-way stop at it with signage, you know, stop ahead or whatever, cause it would just save one, one life. It, it, it'd be well worth it.
Well, we, we, our traffic section does review fatal accident sites, and so we'll conduct a review of that location. And, uh, I'll make sure to, uh, make, uh, provide you all with the results of that review, and we'll see, see what they come up with.
Excellent, cause I know there's been, in less than twelve months, we've had two fatal accidents there. And it's just, this last one was a fifteen-year-old, so.
This has been going on for decades.
Uh, yeah, that's.
Yeah, so it's a left-hand turn. I'm sorry, I travel that road every day, that's where I go home, so.
Okay, well, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to bring that up because it is part of Catharpan and.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Look for a motion to approve.
Also move.
I'll second.
All right.
You're too slow.
Yeah, I know, I saw you.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mrs. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, so. Uh, that would take us back to action items seven, C and D.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, VDOT has recommended you adopt an auxiliary list, this is a list of secondary road improvement projects that aren't in the six-year plan, but at some point, funds become available to move six-year plan projects up, and then these projects can come in right behind, or there's some other funding that may come available. Uh, they thought it was best if you kept that list, this is something that you can amend at any time during the year. It's kind of an at-the-ready list, um, and the only project that is on there is an old office road. Um, so, staff recommends that to go ahead and adopt this list with the understanding, as presented with, uh, uh, vehicle counts of fifty more or, uh, or greater, that you all can bring additional projects, uh, and maybe, uh, agree upon from time to time.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
And then lastly, the amendments to the agreement with the Orange Youth Sports Foundation.
Oh, we've got a few, we've got an agreement with Orange Youth Sports to manage our, to run the programs there at the field, and we set some minor cleanup amendments, added a paragraph that the county pays for the equipment it owns it, and just some minor cleanup, and so I'm looking for some motion to authorize the county administrator to sign the amended agreement.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor say aye.
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 Done. That being all, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.